Good morning. We're ready to start the council meeting of June 8th, 2022. If you would bow your heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, we just come to you just as humble as we know how, Lord, not deserving, but just to say thank you, Lord. Thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to rise and just do our routine without even thinking about it, Lord. You were just there. You watched over us through the night. And thank you for watching over our city like you do. And, Lord, as we get ready to handle the business of the city, we ask that you move in the midst of us, that we will make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Lord, we ask for safe travel for everyone going to their next destination. And this is our prayer that we ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, number one item is ordinance 22R11, FY23 budget, second and final reading.
Y'all have the second reading of the FY23 budget ordinance. This reflects the changes council approved at the May 26 meeting. This does not include the tax rate ordinance that will come to y'all separately once we get the certified rate from the state. To answer any questions, but we recommend this for approval.
Any comments?
Hey, just to make sure I'm square on something, just to... So, I apologize, I was not able to make the last meeting, so I'm following up on this. So, this is our actual second reading of the budget itself. We just don't have the tax rate, which will be a separate ordinance that we have to do when we equalize. Is that...
It's always a separate ordinance. The tax rate is, yep.
All right. So, any questions we had? So, as it relates to the budget, because I missed that last meeting, I did want to ask you guys, you know, I know that Ronnie and Madeline voted against it, just kind of to get some, I mean, some background for me. Is there something in the budget, or is it more process, or what? I don't know. Ronnie, we...
Yeah, it's... And so, to Aaron's point, obviously, the big thing that was on my mind was the certified tax rate. And I know that, Aaron, to your point, we do that afterwards, and there are assumptions made here in the budget based on revenue growth, sales tax, other things. And I brought up the question related to the equalization process, just to kind of talk about it, to get some of that on the table, because I thought it was good with all the discussion that we'd had about property reassessment. I also mentioned that my first budget that I voted on was the tax increase of, yes, 19 when we did that. And so, we had talked about the impact overall of reassessment and how the certified rate had continued to come down to keep us revenue neutral. And so, I posed the question of, you know, is that something we were going to continue to allow to happen now, facing what is likely to be more challenging economic times, more uncertain economic times? The reliance upon growth, which is uncertain, I think, during more challenging economic times, the reliance upon sales tax, which I think is, you know, the variable piece of what we do, the property taxes, the fixed base that we know we're going to get. We're uncertain about the growth of how that property tax base grows. But it was more a little reluctance to vote on the budget without some consideration of, hey, do we need to not necessarily lower that certified rate to the extent it's being all the way? Without some conversation of, should we be building even greater reserves, less reliance upon debt moving forward, because the increasing cost of debt as we look out, should we be looking to pay cash for projects rather than borrowing, knowing the borrowing cost is probably going to be higher? Just an overall discussion, but I didn't make a huge issue about it. I just said what I thought.
So, is it kind of akin to the discussion we had about the trash fee?
All that, altogether.
Because you want to just all of a sudden go from $7 to $25. You try to incrementally get it there. Same kind of idea on the taxes, just to not necessarily absorb the whole thing and just essentially take a small tax increase now, instead of trying to do 35 cents five years from now, or whatever, like what we had to do four years ago. Is that kind of the idea?
Knowing that we probably think that it's a losing battle in some cases to... Careful as I say this, I haven't thought through some of this, but as we continue to grow services that we provide, as the population base grows, as we talk about what that costs to service versus commercial, because we've talked a lot about that, will it put us behind if we do not incrementally increase it? And it's confusing, you know, for us and for others listening, but what that means is not let it fall as much through the equalization process. But a lot of it, too, Rick, was the philosophical debate of, you know, most everybody that I talk to about property taxes has no clue how it really works. And so, you have to have that discussion with them about how that works. What's the difference between assessment and what that translates to from an equalization standpoint? How does the certified rate play into that, whether it be residential or commercial? And so, it was, if we're going to do something, this is probably my biggest point, now is the time to do something, rather than a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, and a non-assessment year, where it's not the opportunity to talk through about why we're doing it based on the reassessment. It's that, hey, we spent more than we have, so we're going to pass it on to you, which is clearly not the situation we're in now.
Did you ever do any numbers, I mean, as far as what the, to think through, well, this would be the right amount of absorption, you know, I'll call it absorb, you know, I mean, did you kind of say, well...
No. I did two scenarios for people that called, because, you know, we get a lot of the 40% assessment versus the 25% assessment, and our apartment's paying their fair share. And while that's debatable, if you go through and do a door count and a value count on the 40% piece at multifamily doors versus the 25% piece on single-family residential doors, most people think that multifamily's not paying its freight. And the truth is that those numbers are really closer than people think. I would argue that multifamily is paying its freight. But then you get into the philosophical piece of how much service are they actually requiring? That makes it fuzzy. It gets really hard to know, because the only analysis about it.
I guess I was just sort of curious, if you're thinking about not absorbing the whole decrease in rate, you know, how much do you not absorb? You know, how much do we need to incrementally step up? I mean, did you...
I think I said 3 cents or 5 cents, but I didn't have a revenue number that was tied to that, because we didn't really have that conversation this budget cycle. We had it a lot four years ago when we talked about it.
Yeah.
But we didn't talk about it. And again, it was about being tied to the reassessment of properties. It was about the cost of debt service moving forward, building cash and paying cash rather than reliance upon debt service, mostly philosophical. And I didn't like the fact that we didn't have a certified rate, but I understand.
So, this is a question for everybody, I guess, just to get this out. I'm going to belabor this too much. I mean, you know, because we have been building up our cash, you know, our fund balance so much in the last few years here.
Yep.
You know, is that made up for? We certainly all, we certainly all had the discussion four years ago, or three and a half years ago, or whatever, of this incremental idea that the next assessment that comes around, we're not going to let this happen again. I think we, I think that it came with, though, you know, not necessarily on the heels of having, you know, increasing our fund balance by 50% in the last two and a half years, or whatever, you know? So, it's hard to put those things together. I was asking on the number, but, you know, that's why I was kind of saying, you know, what is the specific number? But did y'all have any discussion, and I'm sorry again, but did y'all have any discussion about just kind of fund balance and fund balance spend as it related to the budget last time? You know, as far as like, well, we're going to have X amount less debt, and we're comfortable spending down fund balance by X amount? Did y'all...
But, you know what? Before we do, let's, I don't know, talk, since you, Bert, raised it, I think it's a good point, to talk about fund balance, because we really looked at fund balance and, just in round numbers, as I have pulled it up yet, and Aaron's probably searched for it, she could pull it up quicker. We generally talk about fund balance, and we've increased fund balance pretty well, and we do. So, if it's around 100 million in fund balance right now, 20 million of that is not real cash. It's accounts receivable, it's accounting, it's an accounting number. So, 20 million off the top right there is not money we could spend one way or the other, not until we get it in. But it's carried on, is part of our fund balance. Our financial policies require that we maintain about 56 million of that, just in, and it's based on a percentage of our budget. So, as our budget increases each year, that number goes up.
Yeah.
It really leaves net about 23, and again, I'm rounding numbers, about 23 million in true fund balance that, you know, I've heard rainy date funds kind of used, or things like, that's really a number that is there, and...
Above and beyond the...
Above and beyond, essentially.
It's kind of like an unallocated fund balance.
Yeah, that we have, that we have out there. So, our fund balance has increased. Some of that increase, though, is because our budgets increased, and so, we just have to have that reserve, because that's what we've adopted as a financial policy. The accounts, the accounting part of our fund balance probably stays pretty even, I would think, over a period of time.
The only thing that came to my mind when I, you know, just sort of got snippets of, hey, that you guys didn't go for, and that there was some talk about tax increase, the only thing that came kind of to my mind was actually exactly along the lines of what you're talking about, which was, you know, kind of this percentage of, you know, the fund balance is a percentage of our budget, and the impact of wage inflation, really, on what we need to keep in reserve in terms of fund balance, right? So, every time that we need to give a 7 plus 4% raise kind of idea, or 3, you know, whatever we end up, or whatever, however that ends up, you know, we're talking about a 10% increase on 50% of our budget, or 60% of our budget.
Largest part of our expenses, yeah.
That, you know, there is a requirement to our fund balance. And so, you know, is that some reason why we would take, whether it's a penny, or 3 pennies, or 5 pennies, or whatever, to go, well, you know, essentially, all we're doing with this tax rate situation is offsetting the fund balance requirement based on wage inflation, which we control in terms of, we vote on it, but we kind of don't control in terms of the market pressures for that, right? And so, that was really, I didn't know if you'd run any numbers, if some of that was incorporated into it, or whatever. That's why I kind of asked about the numbers, is what, you know, what impact would a 10% increase to our, you know, our compensation package, not just salaries, but, you know, that impacts 401K match, that impacts a lot of other things. So, you know, does that have any...
Yeah.
And is it enough that there isn't any kind of idea of absorbing some of the tax rate? That was the only thing that kind of came to my mind, that would be, I mean, in a year where we're increasing and things are good and all that kind of stuff, that, you know, it's hard to think about tax increases.
Right.
But, you know, I do agree that most people that I talked to, and it's easy to forget about these things after three or four years, but back then, three or four years ago, most people we talked to said, you know, we understand tax rates need to go up a little bit, but we'd much rather see them go up incrementally than all one big slap of 35, or 40, or 30, whatever the number ended up being back then, so...
Yeah. It's, it's, it's...
Sorry, I don't mean to muddy the waters, I just...
But, and there's a lot of factors, and it gets a little complicated in there as far as, you're right, though, because it increases salary, which is the largest part of a budget, of an effect on what we're required to keep in fund balance from a reserve standpoint. From a property tax standpoint, we're, conceptually, we tried to look at this budget this year, and I think it's important maybe for council to kind of think about it this way, is the property tax, because as Ronnie said, is the most stable part of our income. It can vary, you know, and it may vary, and we saw some variance in probably 2008, like most other places. But generally speaking, it's much more stable than sales tax, which can vary quite dramatically, you know, really in a short period of time. So, you look at your long-term expenses, you know, debt service, which is not going to vary, it's always going to be, it's going to be there, as long as you have the debt outstanding, you don't have a choice. Generally, schools and what we pay for, school debt and school operating is something that doesn't vary, because we have maintenance of effort requirements. And so, we have to make sure that that's covered by our property tax. You know, we have, conceptually, put solid waste in there, and the cost to solid waste, until it becomes an enterprise fund that can be supported by its own revenue stream, because it is a utility that can be supported, and we're not going to back off solid waste. So, that's, so once you allocate those for property taxes, and if those vary any, that's probably the best reason to vary your property tax. So, you know, I'll be honest, if you build another school, you know, which would pretty much take out all the debt that we would probably issue in one year, a vast majority of it, then you'd probably want to allocate that to a property tax and how that's going to increase. There's not, not to say that you wouldn't take a look at what we need to do to fund balance or everything else, but those kind of fixed, more or less fixed costs, less variable costs that you would have, may be a reason why that, that does need to adjust. And I say those three things, but that service is related to CIP. So, the more we put into roads, the more that debt service would change, and the more the property tax needs to probably be conceptually allocated. We don't, there are some states that require you to spend, to adjust your tax for specific reasons. Tennessee doesn't require that, but there are states where you'd say, yeah, if I'm going to issue debt, I have to increase my, my property tax or secondary property tax, you know, to pay for that. So, anyway, that's, that's a way to think about how we're, we may need to adjust on property tax this year. We recommended a budget that didn't have a property tax increase, because we felt like we were solid on those right now, although there's quite a bit of uncertainty, as everybody knows, in the economy going forward. So, we'd take a look at it, but we felt like we had enough to adjust if we needed to next year. And I know, you know, things change in August here, but next year, if we needed to make any adjustments, to make the adjustments then. So, that's where we're at, and that's why we recommended without an increase this, this particular year. Not to say that the concept isn't right, you know, certainly.
I mean, I think if I just knew some just raw quick numbers here, I mean, is our compensation stuff, is it going to be over 100 million dollars, isn't it?
Um...
I mean...
Our comp for...
Salary benefits.
Benefits, yeah.
It'd be, yeah, right about 105 million.
Based on 110 million, I thought, I thought that's what it was, but at 110 million, if you kind of just do the math on that, if you got a 15% increase, which we've had in the last 14 months, to the compensation side of it at least, but, you know, we're going to have increase in the healthcare side, you know that as well, so that's going to make that number closer. When you start to kind of extrapolate out, I think the number, if I did my math right, is that they would have like an $8 million, if we take six months, you know, take that, take that $16 million, and you got to have six months.
Thought about it.
It's going to be $8 million, I mean, as far as extra budget.
To fund balance.
Oh, $16 million to fund balance?
Yeah.
Well, eight, because you'd have six months. So, 16 would be the full year, half of that's eight. You need to have that in reserve.
If we increase fund...
I mean, I don't, I mean, and again, it's all about that relationship between fund balance as a percentage of, you know, and I think maybe, you know, as I was just sitting here thinking about it, as I was thinking about this over the last couple of nights, and thinking about our meeting today, was just this, just this idea of whether or not, trying to get this in my brain, of whether or not it's one of those things, I kind of mentioned it to y'all the other day, I just don't think I thought about it this way, is, I'll say the other day, it's been a month or two ago, just this idea of a lot of the, you know, growth, a lot of the expenses that come with growth are kind of tail-end expenses, right? You know, the building the new school is after you get the growth, you know, because you filled up everything, now all of a sudden, you got to build a new school to take care of this next phase. So, it feels like this growth, and I'm just kind of wondering, are we, you know, that $8 million of necessary fund balance absorbed by just the salary and compensation part of our budget, doesn't have anything to do with the rest of our budget, the expenses? And all of a sudden, now, take away the assigned part, the account receivable part, and our cushion to fund balance isn't quite what I think we all feel like it is.
Right.
You just think nominally going from 60 million to 100 million in a pretty short period of time. So, I don't know, just talking out loud, thinking out loud here more than anything, but...
And another thing I brought up, and it will not affect me directly, but it will affect probably the council that is here a year from now, is, you know, it's, it's pretty hard to explain, because we all had to try to do it, a 36% increase percentage-wise. It's hard to explain that. With people talking about a 40% appreciation in property values, it would be less difficult to explain a 3 cent or a 5 cent, you know, increase in, in the certified rate, because most people don't understand the connectivity, or at least most people that I've spoken with, did not understand the direct connectivity to, my property taxes are going up 40%, so you have to go through that exercise. But, you know, I do think if you're going to have that conversation, this is just a philosophical thing for me, this is the time to have that conversation, not 12 months from now, 18 months from now, 24 months from now, but the way our budget cycle works, the way things do work, I understand it's, it's more challenging and complex than that. But I just brought it up for conversation, because I thought we need to talk about it.
And the problem I had, and the reason why I voted no to the budget, was it still bothers me that almost 1,000 employees and just, we have only one employee that didn't even get a raise of a penny. That bothers me. I felt like, and I still feel like, we could have given her $1,000, or $500, because we make exceptions all the time. We say we're going to put this amount here, and then we end up maybe putting more, or, you know, we make that exception all the time. And this particular employee, I got to know and has a second job, just to make a bills, you know, meet a bills. I just, I mean, I just cannot, it bothers me.
I'm not quitting my second job.
Yeah, I know.
I didn't mean to make a laugh at that, I just, it just popped through my head, and I said it.
But you quitting your second, but you quitting your second job by choice.
I know, I know, it's different, I'm sorry.
But, you know, I just, I mean, where's our sensitivity on this council? One employee, I can see if it was 10, but we're talking about one lady, and everybody's getting something, and we didn't give her a penny, and she's faithful, does a fabulous job, nothing in her shield, performance, I just, guys, I just...
I'll tell you just my thoughts on that, just to say it, so I, because I'm not on that team, just to say it, I will explain to you why, because I think it'd be unfair to the 11 people who didn't do it for last year, to do it for one person now, just because it's one. I mean, we have made exceptions to that policy, and so, I just think, to me, it's more unfair to do it to the 11 people that we didn't do it for last year, and no telling how many we didn't do it for the year before that, and the year before that, that you, one person, to do it for this year. That's my only...
How many times have we looked back and said, okay, we didn't do this to these, but hey, this is here and this is now? The economy, when that happened, was not as bad as it is today. I think we need to look at the present. The economy was not near as bad as it is today. But we could go on all day about that, but it bothers me.
I just want to explain to you.
I got you, I got you, but situations have changed since last year, financially and everything.
All right.
Okay, any more questions or discussion? Ms. Brown?
Y'all need a motion.
Oh, a motion, thank you. I'm just a little bit thrown off.
Are we going to meet next Thursday?
Will you be there?
I can't be. Am I going to quit before that? I can't be that, too.
Well, give your check to this employee.
I thought you were saying, give me a check, leave by next Thursday.
No, no, we won't meet tomorrow night, we'll probably meet next Thursday.
Next Thursday, you want to meet, the 16th?
Yeah, yeah.
I won't be here on the 16th. My nephew's getting married, out of town, so I won't be here. Just FYI. Any comments about, oh, we're going to meet, Rick, in particular reason?
Oh, I don't know. If everybody was going to be here, I was considering thinking about it, making a motion to defer, but I'm not going to do that with them being gone. I just thought we changed the order for that week, and it was really, you know, because I was just not as prepared as normal on this, but it's not fair, so I...
Do you think we should vote on the final budget without the mayor being here? What do y'all think?
He voted on first reading, didn't he?
Yeah, he already voted.
Okay.
This is the second reading, no.
Yes, yeah, but I mean, we know how he voted. I guess if we don't change any, if we were to change something, I don't think we want everybody here, would be mine.
Did we, we did, did we change?
Well, they changed it last week, but there's no changes for today.
Okay. Motion?
Maybe we approve the budget.
Second.
Okay, no. Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
No.
Okay. FY23 budget resolutions, resolution 22R14, water resources.
Yes, y'all have the budget resolutions for water, stormwater, and city schools to consider today as well. The water and stormwater budgets have been updated to reflect the 1.5% COLA that was included, added to the city's budget at the May 26 meeting. Other than that, there's been no changes.
Adam, may we take A, B, and C together?
They need to be voted on separately.
Okay. Any comments on the water resources?
I think it...
Second.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Resolution 22R15, stormwater utility management?
Second.
There's no one that we can...
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Resolution 22R16, city schools.
Approval?
Second.
Ms. Brown? Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Resolution 22R17, other folks' employment benefits, OEB finance.
This is the annual election to provide medical insurance benefits to retirees for FY23. The benefit's not part of the pension or retirement plans, the city's chosen pay-as-you-go method of funding, which requires annual election to continue providing this benefit. The FY23 budget includes OEPED benefits on the same basis that's currently provided in FY22.
I had a comment about this that I've been thinking about ever since we hired, no, actually, it may have been before Jennifer, certainly during the process when we had that consultant in, had to do with these OEPED benefits, I don't know, we won't really get in this today, or whatever, but, you know, it does matter, and I think it matters to, say, the four folks that are, at least, at least the three that are kind of more under our, you know, what we administer, manage here. Obviously, you know, it's going to be a small number of people, but, you know, the reality is, when we were doing that, kind of, I talked, I said to that lady, the consultant, I think it was in here, about kind of having some consistency among their contracts and sort of what, you know, because some of them have a little bit of difference in their, long story short, I think, you know, kind of part of it, and I had met with Randolph, and I'm coming out of left field on Randolph here, this has been months ago since we last talked about it. I ended up having to ask Adam about it, and I didn't really want to, just because he's one of the three people that might get impacted by this, but, long story short, it kind of, it kind of was a two birds with one stone idea, and it's been so long ago since I thought about it, that I want to try to regurgitate it right, or think about this right, but the idea was essentially that, you know, the, first of all, getting them consistent, where each of them have kind of the same type of benefits they get, if they retire, if they get retired by the council, or whatever happens, that it's consistent. But also, there was part of it where, related to having your health insurance after you are gone for some amount of time, I think Randolph, Randolph did some research for me, tried to look around at some different municipalities and sort of what they do. I mean, listen, I'm going to tell you, it's a little... I mean, listen, I'm gonna tell you, it's a little bit shaky because it would be potentially something to the idea of, well, you know, if they've been here for at least, I think what we decided on Randolph was something like, if they've been here for at least two years, is they get a couple of years, which is...
That's correct, yes.
So it kind of covered their COBRA number, plus six months of health insurance.
Right.
The idea behind it in my brain, and I mentioned this to that consultant that day, was we seem to need some more incentives for leadership positions. It's always, it's, it's always hard to, to get those people. And frankly, as I thought through it during that process, I mean, to go be an employee that's at the will of seven elected people, that almost half of which changes every two years, I mean, I'm never going to that interview, ever, unless there's some real substantial stuff on the back end and covering me. I mean, you think about a sports, you know, an athlete, you know, they've got back end protection because they could get hurt, you know, next first game, they get hurt. They need to make sure they got some back end protection. And I, I don't know, it's just always kind of bothered me, and, and I, I've got, you know, things in my ear, which is, you know, making it consistent with, with these three in the room, specifically, and also doing something that, for in the future, not only are they protected from a, you know, it's not that much, but just basically to have some, you know, understanding that they're gonna have basically the OEPD benefit for a couple of years. And that's based on what Randolph went out and looked at, to what others from municipalities kind of offer. I'm just gonna lay out here for everybody on the table here, that, I mean, the downsides, is I think what we discussed was, you know, it's not necessarily the same thing that every other employee is getting, I'm just gonna put that on the table. And, and, and the idea, though, is not every other employee has no recourse. If four people decide they want somebody gone, they're gone tomorrow. And there's no appeal process, there's no none of that, like exists for Craig, and Adam, and Jennifer, I guess the judge, I don't really, you know, we don't ever see that, but like we do y'all, but, um, you know, so, I don't know, my, you know, after talking through it with them, and I did talk through it with Adam, because I was trying to, he was helping me with sort of just the legal piece of this, but I'm cutting him off the hook, he didn't, you know, he was like, look, I'm, one way or another, I'll do whatever you say, right, I don't want to be in that conversation. But I had to get him involved to understand the legality, the legal piece of, you know, how you do that from HR standpoint, or whatever. So I don't know if that got anything to do with this resolution, if we would have to put that in the resolution, or if that's just a contractual thing that we would do.
This resolution just pertains to the retiree benefits.
Got it.
So I, I think what you're talking about is referring to our contracts separately. So that would be a separate conversation, and Adam can correct me if I'm wrong.
I may bring that up another business, but right now, I'll move to approve resolution 22R17.
Ms. Brown? Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Correcting the zoning boundary for the Clary Park PUD birth reading. Ordinance 22OZ16.
Y'all familiar with...
Oh, you're gonna do it, you're gonna do it all the time?
Has to, I can...
Okay, good. It's clerical, right, I mean, y'all know what's going on, y'all wanna hear from me?
We assumed you were reducing multifamily further in Clary Park, is what we assumed this was about.
That was the multifamily, just letting you know, don't worry about it, though. Fuck it. I didn't mean to do that, y'all, y'all know what it's about, that's what I...
I read it.
I would, I would like, I would like...
It's a clerical thing.
It's fine, but just, just if we could do it briefly, I'd appreciate it.
That was gonna be the question.
You might ask me a question, and I didn't want to have to refer him to Rick.
Most of the time, I like to extend these readings, I was trying to shorten that.
Out of your zone, isn't it?
Will you hit the gavel and rule him out of order or something?
If y'all put this in my hand, it might hit something else. That's dangerous.
Come a little closer, Madeline.
I'm a mortician, I'll kill you, bury you, and nobody miss you.
Margaret?
Better.
Margaret.
Vice Mayor, Council, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak, Councilman LaLance. This item is clerical nature, I think, as you mentioned. As you probably recall, in 2021, the City Council and Planning Commission considered an application to rezone property to Planned Unit District and CH, Commercial Highway District. And the properties remain in Gateway Design Overlay District. During our study and research for rezonings, Mr. Blomley is tasked with creating maps that communicate to you the boundaries of the request. And during the development of the technical plans for this project, it came to our attention that there was a minor error in the mapping that Mr. Blomley prepared. And if you have studied the maps, you probably, you may have had trouble even identifying the area where the change is. But now that we're at the stage where there's been surveying, and right-of-way dedication, and more and more research into the property, it, we noticed that a small area of a driveway for the apartments, and a pocket park along that driveway, was shown as to be zoned Commercial Highway. It should have correctly reflected what you reviewed in the plan, which is PUD. And so just to make sure that everything is consistent and clear, the planning department's asking City Council to, what's the action? Approve the correction of the map to correctly show the zoning boundaries consistent with the plan that you approved in 2021. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, otherwise, we do ask that you approve this.
Rick, I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Ms. Brown? Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, Martin, Amy.
I was just counting to see how many more meetings Mr. LaLance, LaLance did. Okay.
See, really, I don't think you can handle it, just throwing the gavel.
Believe it or not, I'm gonna miss you. Workshop items, April dashboard?
I'm happy to answer any questions, this dashboard just follows the same format as the previous ones.
Questions? Comments? Okay. Do we have any licensing? We have no licensing, okay. Statements? No statements. Business, I think, Rick, you say you want to bring something up?
I don't know, maybe we should just give it a week through here, just till, till another meeting, but just something y'all want to maybe ask Adam about between next time we discuss it, or Randolph, I think, you know, any of the, any of them would be good to talk to. I'm gonna bring it up, I just don't want to throw it on you in one, you know, all at one time. I just didn't know if we had to do it before that, I got kind of, I think we might need to get it done quickly, but if we don't, I'd say y'all just may, if you have questions, ask them about it. But I'll probably be bringing it up next couple of weeks.
I'll just comment just generally on that. I know that's tricky when we start talking about contract piece of that versus the broad base of employee doing that.
Yeah.
But, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about trying to be competitive for the city overall in different jobs and positions and all that sort of thing. I don't think it, I don't think the spirit of that should be any different than what we do for, if you will, seniors, the most senior staff, or the folks that report directly to the council. So I, I'd be in support a little bit as well.
Of course.
Broadly speaking.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, y'all don't need to think about it more, I'll move on with it, but if y'all want to think about it, I'm totally cool with that, I would, I would like that, too. If I was, did something, it really boils down to something pretty simple, which is essentially just saying, we're trying to make sure we've got some benefits on the back end, which is, in essence, equates to just the health insurance side of this, is what you mean. Is that, am I forgetting anything on that?
The only thing I would say is just that it, the thing, the, the benefit you're discussing could be done either through an amendment to the contract, or it could be done in a resolution. The distinction would be that the resolution would be subject to renewal each year, just as, as it would be with every other employee, every other retiree. Whereas if you put it in the contract, it's a matter of contract. But there are two different routes that you could go.
Could I maybe ask this again, instead of bringing it up for a vote today? Could I maybe ask that, I guess, whoever would be the appropriate person to maybe add that language, you know, to put, see what that language would actually look like, so that everybody would know kind of what, what they would be voting on at the time, if we would do the...
In the resolution, or in the contract?
I think, I think contract would be the way to do that, so it's not something...
Don't have to deal with it every year, I would think.
What was that?
Contract, I would think, would be the most realistic, practical way to do it, so you don't have to...
Be the most beneficial.
Yeah.
I, I think what I would probably have asked, because I have an interest in it, I'd probably ask someone on my staff to, to, to do that, or, and to work...
In conjunction with Randolph.
Maybe ask Kelly Baker and Randolph to work on it together, and that they could provide that directly to you.
Rick can handle it, just let Rick handle it.
More nominations, bro.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Cool, thanks.
To protect them and make their life better.
And future-wise, you know, I mean, getting it in the contract, and make, you know, it's consistent among them, first of all, and secondly, it does not only protect them, but it kind of gets it in our language as we look, you know, if whoever resigns, retires, gets retired, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, if that's something that's in there that I think will help us have that competitive, you know, a little bit of competitive, at least matchup, not necessarily an edge, but kind of match us up to what some other municipalities are doing to try to enhance the pool.
Okay.
I have a couple of other things, unless anybody else has any. In front of you is the major project index, so if you have any questions about those projects that are going on in the city, then call, you can call me, or you can call the director, executive director that has those in there, but that's just a listing as an index of major things going on, so I'll give you a little insight into that. There is also a sample, it's a draft on, it's a draft right now, so welcome any comments on it. Application for appointment to the Community Investment Trust for trustees, a draft of that. I think the governor did sign our, yeah, yeah, the governor did sign our private act, so our, our... You gotta bring it back, right?
Yeah, we could bring it back on the 16th to 23rd.
So we'll bring back to council the, the charter amendment and acceptance of what the private act that the governor signed. But in the meantime, getting ready for the process, drafted up an application for individuals to put some basic information on there. I think most likely what you'll see is individuals that we're somewhat familiar with, that would have an interest really in serving in the community, and have the qualifications to do it. The second page has some of the qualifications listed on there. You'll notice it says also attached would be the draft trust document, so they'll be able to read that and see a little bit more. But in summary, it summarizes what that draft document says as far as qualifications, and then asks for some commentary on how they, how they might fit that. So the thought is, once we get the trust, or even before that, I mean, we can collect applications at any point in time, that we finalize this. So I'll give you a couple of days, let me know, maybe sometime by the end of the week, if there's anything else you want to, any other information you want to see on those basic information. And then I'll send you out a, a final version of it that you can send to those that you think might be interested, and we'll put it on the website, and start to collect those and accumulate them so that the council can make the decision in timely manners to go forward and get that trust set up.
How about the application for the amendments?
Yeah, that'll, that'll follow, that'd be a little more simple, yeah, because the qualifications, I think, basically are citizen and maybe some, I forget now, but it's, it's less.
Could we have that at the same time, do you think?
Sure, yeah, I'll put that together, that one's not too complicated. That one, as a matter of fact, could be more...
More like boards and commissions.
More like our boards and commission application, but we may clean it up just to make it look a little of the same, but...
Also, I'm sorry, Greg, are you finished?
That's it for that.
Also, we have before us a holiday comparison with all of the holiday, were you gonna talk about this?
We can, yeah, it was, we, we talked about last meeting, gathering some information, and somebody was nice enough to do this, I forgot who.
Yeah, Amanda compiled that chart.
Amanda, Amanda, thank you, Amanda. Amanda did some survey and gathered some information on, on holidays for, from other organizations, and we have that in front of you to take a look at. We, we're about where everybody else is, I mean, there's some flexible things in there, some of them give Christmas Eve off, or, or, it's not certain, they, they may kick Christmas Eve off.
Christmas Eve is kind of optional, premier year.
It's optional with other organizations, we give Christmas Eve off. County does election days, we don't, but of course, we give employees time to go vote. We, we, that's a federal law, so hopefully comply with that, we do. And so they have time to go and vote when they need to go and vote. So it seems like we're pretty good right now, as far as our holidays are concerned. Of course, Good Friday is, a couple of organizations do give that off. The question, of course, is what, where do we draw the line as far as which holidays we recognize? If we're gonna recognize a holiday, a Good Friday as a holiday, and we accommodate other holidays? There are vacation days, of course, that's eligible for a vacation day, and someone who wanted to take it off for that purpose, I don't think they would, you know, scheduling would be worked out for them, and they would certainly be able to take that off as a, as a paid holiday using their vacation days. So the budget amount was...
About 75,000.
75,000 additional to have employees off for that Good Fridays, so, I mean...
What, what, I was actually gonna ask you sort of, I mean, in my opinion, just for, for a standpoint of having the information available, necessarily making a decision on this, is kind of the, kind of the overall pros and cons, right? I mean, the delivery of services, not necessarily just fiscal, but, you know, delivery of services, if we give off, you know, if we give, that's right, if we give everybody off, you know, all of the holidays, does that, how does it impact our delivery of services? You know, what departments can do and can't do, and how many, you know, how many of them, you know, do participate or don't participate based on what we might do here? I, I kind of, I know some of those kinds of things, but then now, where, where does the 75,000, you said it costs $75,000 to add a holiday, basically?
I just, I just looked at the average cost of our holiday pay, you know, where we pay police, fire, on, on comp employees, it's...
Ah.
Fleet, you know, things like that, just to see where it kind of averages out. And so that's where that number came from.
Yeah, because it's, it's a paid holiday, so it doesn't change that, it's the additional, 75 is about the additional. Yeah, that's, that's the difference, but every holiday is, is a hit to productivity, I mean, that's no question. If you have people, and then there are those departments who either go on standby, you know, streets will take a holiday, but there are, they have a standby crew, well, every weekend, every day off, there's a standby crew, and so you start to shift into those, and of course, police and fire are always, you know, 24/7, 365, so that's where the holiday pay comes in. So every, everyone you add, it does have an impact somewhere.
It's because they get paid more on the holiday days?
If they work, they get paid double.
Yeah, that's, that's the 75, essentially, is because of that.
Gotcha.
So we can marinate over this. The mayor's not here, and I think he needs to be here if we, if and when we vote on it. I'm all for giving our employees another holiday, but I'm gonna compare, look at what's been put before us. And as far as services and pay, it won't be different than any other holiday. I don't see a difference, but you know, that's why I said I'm gonna look at this and study it.
Yeah, I just don't know, the things that popped in my mind were things like, you know, how, how far, you know, what kind of a backlog do, do streets or, or solid waste, you know? Obviously, they gotta get the same number of cans picked up that week, for example, right, that they did in every other week, and, you know, how hard is that on their department, their, their employees, and all that kind of stuff? Obviously, everybody, I'm not saying people won't want a day off, I'm just kind of saying, I know there are some back end, and I just would like to have a little better understanding of that. If there's some way, I, I guess what I'm just trying to ask for, kind of, I think we know the pros of it, but maybe the cons of it, just to make sure we don't do something that there's some little unanticipated piece of it that kind of makes the delivery of services harder.
I don't see the delivery service any different from any other holiday, is what I'm saying. I mean, if we can just look at what, you know, the backlog on all the other holidays, and kind of anticipate it's gonna be the same thing on this, if we approve another holiday.
I agree with you.
I agree with you, actually. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be different from other holidays. All I'm trying to say is, can we, you know, can we afford to have, how many more holidays can we afford to have, to where it does become difficult to deliver services, I guess, is if, if that's, if that's a...
Yeah.
If that's the issue, I don't know, you know, but that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, and, and, well, like I said, any, any day off is an effect on productivity, without question, there's some, something goes in there. It's prob, it's, it's hard to anticipate exactly what that would be. Holidays together create a lot more problems, so if you have two or three days, you know, in a month, or a couple of days in a week, or something, that's where you really start to get stressed from a scheduling standpoint. You know, one day, you end up being able to accommodate somehow by shifting things around, and, you know, April, I don't think has, I'm just looking down here, doesn't have a lot of holidays in it, um, so, you know, it can be accommodated. You know, one of the questions, though, is if, you know, we accommodate this particular holiday, which, you know, is certainly well-recognized, and, you know, what, what other holidays do we start to have to recognize that are comparable to this and other, other religious contexts, and where does that line get drawn? And then do we end up with a whole lot more holidays? Or do we say, you know, if you want to take that type of holiday off, you know, we certainly support it, that's why you have vacation days, that's why you have those kind of days that you could use for days that you want to take that are more personal to you, that you want to recognize?
And I'm looking to on a, a lot of our documentation, we are really pushing quality of life and families, so, uh, I think that goes along with it, and, you know, everybody works hard. Things are different today, and, uh, if we can, what we can do to help the employees' morale and everything, I'm gonna always be for it. But we'll look at it.
Yeah, there's no timing element to it, I mean, it can be a decision.
Right.
It's not tied to the budget or something, you know, it's not enough money to, to have a budgetary impact. It's a consideration that council can make, change at any time.
Okay. Any other business coming before the council this afternoon? Everybody okay? Okay, we stand the jury.